To order, we all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Twilight, the roll call.
Counselor Bowie?
Here.
Counselor Bickford?
Yeah.
Counselor Cody?
Here.
Counselor Pomerol?
Here.
Counselor Lunt?
Here.
Counselor Mason?
Here.
Counselor LaWishaw?
Here.
All right, our first order of business.
There are no public hearings. We begin with audience participation. Those at this time who wish to address the council may come forward to use the microphone at the podium, state your name and address for the audience here and at home.
All right, anyone who would like to speak? Mr. Fillmore?
Larry Fillmore from Lisbon. At the last council meeting, I asked where was the $602,759 left over from last year? Has anybody got an answer?
Yes, I do. The number that you quoted, 7,684,757, you got that number off a draft budget report and actually that number included several items that is not part of the operational budget. You included an overlay of 350,000 and also a TIF payment of 406,994. If you subtract that number, which is a 756,994, that will give you our budget that we committed for taxes at 6,927,763.
Okay, which is the difference of?
That's exactly, it's the difference of what you said, 602,759 compared to what number you had.
Okay. See, this is what I'm confused about is that the budget proposal that you people issued or sent out, whatever you want to call it, was 6,551,363. And then you, I got a copy of the expense distribution report for June, which is 530,635, and that's a total of 7,081,998. You provided the numbers and they weren't right to begin with, to start with? Is that what you're saying to us?
No, I'm saying that you're not reading the report correctly. You're looking at a bottom line number at the base of the report, and that report includes the TIF payment back and what we budget for as well as the overlay that we use when we commit taxes. Okay, so that's not money that is part of the 6.9 million that was a budget that was approved. Now, the numbers that you saw in the expense detail, again, these numbers are not, it's a draft. They will not be completely 100% correct until the audit is completed. And some of the expenses that you saw on that report include non-tax dollar funds, which were bonds that we still have not expended, some trails donations, wreaths funds, woodlot funds, and fees that are all separate, but we may expend out of some of those. So they will show up on the expense side, but they aren't necessarily from the 6.9 million that we had to raise for taxes. And the Recreation Department has funding, several funds, and General Assistance has several small funds that are donations and things like that. So those all show up when we expend money from those funds because all that funding is carried forward every year. They're separate funds.
How are the people of Lisbon supposed to know what is the accurate amount of money that you're expending over the year if we can't believe the documents that you provide to us?
The documents that we provide to you, as was explained from what I understand from our finance director, these are draft numbers, okay? And if you can read the report right and understand the accounting and where we put dollars, some, we show a total expense of all the funds that we have. That's what you're reading at the bottom of that report. Now, it may not be from the 6.9 million that we raised from tax dollars, but it's an accurate report on what monies is being spent.
If you run a computer-generated report, which it was, the computer generated the report and you provided it to us, why is that not an accurate report? If it's what is recorded and what would be audited by your auditors, they would have to be the same numbers because it's a computer-generated sheet. So that tells what the computer has it, not what you have, but what the computer has. And what the computer said was the funds expended during that year.
One, all the expenses for that year have not been included in that at this point in time. We are, at the end of the year, not all of our invoices are sitting on our desk at 6:30, 2011. Some come in later and that's when we have to make adjustments.
I understand that.
And sometimes thing gets misplaced in different accounts and the auditor will find those and we might make adjusting entries.
I understand that. A half, over a half a million dollars of adjustments? I mean, that seems a little excessive.
A half, there's not a half a million dollars. Where does that number come from?
The number comes from the budgeted proposal and the expense distribution report like I just indicated to you, both computer-generated by your finance officer. Okay, so what I'm saying to you is this. The difference is 602,759. Now, I would understand that there are still adjustments that have to be made, but you're talking about over a half a million dollars. I don't believe that you could have a half a million dollars in adjustments. I just, I'm just asking what the bottom line is because I don't want this money to come up missing like the 32.5. Where's the 32.5 you guys were going to find for us?
It's not lost, Larry. It was expended by the company that we loaned the money to. They bought equipment with it. It's not money that just plain disappeared. The money was issued to a company and they received a check. They deposited that check and they purchased equipment and other items with it.
So it was a legitimate transaction?
Yes.
Transaction happened. I mean, this probably was a transaction that shouldn't have happened.
Okay, the 603,000 that you're talking about, like I said earlier, is the sum of the 350,000 that we had in the report for an overlay, okay, and 406,994,000 in a TIF payment. Okay, that's where the difference is. If you subtract that total, 756,994, from the amount that you presented, which was at the very bottom of the report, 7,684,757, you'll come up with exactly what the town committed for taxes and for municipal expenditures, which is 6,927,763 dollars.
Okay.
So at the end of the year, when all the records have been reconciled and everything is in its place, then that's when you get your final balance. And last year, I think after Carrie Ford's and the audit, we had about 50,000 go back to undesignated fund balance.
Okay, I was told these were the final figures. That's why I'm asking you. That was why I brought it up.
Jessica told you this was a draft and that there are other funds included in this and that in order to have a complete accurate number of what our expenditures were, you'd have to wait until the audit was completed so they can do what they always do every year, is make final adjustments and make it work.
Jessica did not tell me.
Well, that's what she told me.
Okay, but she did tell me there were other accounts and I've asked her for those accounts too. Now, you just said the 32.5 was a legitimate transaction and there's no investigation pending?
It's not a debate.
Right. I'm sorry, Larry, but we can't have a debate ongoing here. If you have a question or comment.
Oh, I just, he made that statement. It's the first time we heard it.
It was a trans, what happened, there was a loan that was made that was an inappropriate loan, in my opinion, and we're following up on that. We are still hunting up that money. It's why I can't talk very much about it.
Yeah, that's fine. Chief Brooks told me that there was an ongoing investigation. I don't have an issue with that if it's ongoing, but I'm just saying, he just said it was a legal transaction and he made it sound like there was nothing else to do. That's why I questioned that.
I think he misspoke a little bit there. I think.
No, I did not misspoke. Let me explain. You have a loan that was made for 32,500 to a company. It happened to be two individuals. That check got signed by prior finance director to this company and got approved. It did not come before the council like the process is. They filed criminal charges, okay? The Attorney General's office said that there is not enough evidence there to prosecute for criminal charges.
Got it.
End of story. What we are doing with our legal counsel is we are going after the 32,500 because it's owed to us. There's a note that was signed.
Right.
And we said this before. It is now in the hands of our attorney and we are going to try to collect the money from either party that has it.
Very good. I have no other questions on that. That was not what was said before and that's why I'm, that's why I'm having issues because Chief Brooks told me a different story, but that's all right. The last thing I have, well, I have two things, but I'm running out of time. Last thing is, on the council working rules, paragraph 5-d is impossible to comply with. Totally impossible to comply with, and I'll explain it to you. This is the revised, revised, revised copy. Once the agenda item has been explained by its sponsor or the town manager or staff and clarified by any questioning as provided above, there will be time devoted to any resident, taxpayer, or authorized representative of an organization, resident, or taxpayer of the town of Lisbon to address the council regarding this particular agenda item during the designated public hearing time or the designated audience participation time. We're first on the agenda, okay? We haven't heard any sponsors say anything. So how can we address an issue if we do not have, according to this, the sponsor explaining why the agenda item is on the agenda? And are we going to say timeout? We're going back now to audience participation to allow the residents to talk on this item? Or what? I mean, I understand that we can talk during the audience participation, but what are we going to say? The sponsor hasn't told us what they're doing. So this is impossible to comply with. Totally impossible the way it's written.
Thank you, Mr. Fillmore. We'll definitely consider that when we discuss that later.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Dorothy Fitzgerald, resident of Lisbon Falls. You'd be disappointed if I didn't get up and speak. I have several things where audience participation is at the head of the meeting now. I am going to try to address everything before it comes up as a topic. The first one is not a topic, but I would like to thank the Public Works Department. There was a manhole repair at the foot of Vining Street on the corner of Vining and School Street. The manhole was loose. The pavement needed repair. Public Works Department was out there to remove the bad pavement, did some tamping down of dirt, and then they resurfaced it. When they put the manhole cover back on again, evidently it didn't get put on correctly and I could hear clunk, clunk, clunk. Front wheels, back wheels, clunk, clunk. After about 200 times, you really don't hear it that much except when it's about 5 o'clock in the morning. I think the repairs were done near the end of the week and the barricade was taken down. And Monday morning, I was pleased. Around 9 o'clock, silence. They came and fixed it. Okay, second, E.T. Smith Host Company siding bids. I don't know what you people were thinking putting that out to bid. Anyway, you give three or four town employees raises of $10,000, which is $30,000 to $40,000, and then put $35,000 out to bid for how many years at what percent interest rate. This does not, no wonder the federal government is in the problem that they're still trying to fix. When our little town does something irresponsible as this. Anyway, that's my comment on that. Fire department Jeep replacement, I read something somewhere that, oh, in the Times Record, that this Jeep evidently has been out of order for some time. Why does it need replacing? Is this something that you can get along without? Question?
It would have to be for the fire department. I don't know what their opinion is on that yet. We haven't discussed it yet.
And unfortunately, I won't be able to make a comment after that comes up for discussion, correct?
That's correct.
Unfortunately. Let's see, revaluation bids. Did that go out to bid?
Yes, it did.
How many bids were received?
Two.
Two bids. Where was this advertised?
In the Sun Journal, on the website, and we sent out letters to all the main companies in the region that do this kind of work.
Okay. All I saw was one Sun Journal ad, that tiny print, you know, legal notice. And that's the only one that I saw because I don't see whatever else goes out. I guess that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to address the council? And we are trying to move comments to the beginning of the meeting, so this is a good time to speak if you have anything to say.
Just to clarify, Ken Wells, Lisbon Falls. So if, when you guys talk about the park ordinance, we cannot talk about this once we get past the audience participation, is that correct?
The goal is we're trying to move to something more like what the planning board does where you have audience participation at the beginning and then we'll see how it goes. If there's a lot of problems.
Once I agree with Larry, you guys have screwed up on this really big time. I'd just like to know why and snowmobiles are not allowed in Beaver Park. You're changing that to section 30-88, recreational vehicles, motorized?
That was something that we just put in because the rules of Beaver Park that were voted on by the council quite a few years ago prohibited ATVs and snowmobiles in the park. And it did not, so this did not coincide or match what we have for a ordinance.
Is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So we added it in. It's open for discussion. But the reason, from what I understand, and this was done a while ago, is that the trails there in the winter are open for cross-country skiing and snowshoeing. And they limited, and I don't know the reason why they limited it for just that, but that's.
Is there, and so there is no current snowmobiles trails?
No, there are not.
Okay. And the other question on the Jeep, the article I read says the Jeep's been out of service for two years?
Yes. It was, we couldn't get a sticker. The floor had rotted out on it, so we sold, we put it out to bid when we took it off the road and we sold it, I think, what, for $500, so.
So let me, that Jeep was originally the fire chief that was, had to be out of service, so he needed a new vehicle, so we bought him that new vehicle.
I can't answer that question.
And then, I'm just trying to refresh everybody's, and so then this maintained or stayed in service for, I don't know, how many more years? Chief, can you tell me?
I think we had it in service for two years.
Two years? Okay. So what, between when it was taken out of service and now, what has, because that was what the?
Article of the duty officer.
The duty officer's vehicle, what have they been doing in places at?
When I get to my section, I'll explain that, or if I can answer that.
If you'd like to answer that, go ahead.
Now, they're using their personal vehicle.
And they're compensated for it?
Negative.
I'd rather see them get compensated for it than buy a new vehicle.
That's certainly an option that we'll have to bring up, yeah.
All right, that's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
I'd like to clarify one thing. On all ordinances, there is a public hearing after the first reading, so there is an opportunity for additional discussion from the public on all ordinance changes.
For the first readings only, the ones that say first reading?
The way the ordinance process works, Ken, is the council has a first reading, then it has to go to a public hearing.
So a future date?
A public hearing, public gets to provide comment back to council, depending on what council takes from that public hearing. If there's drastic changes, we'd have to go back to another first reading. If there's very minor changes, we could go on to a second reading and then approve it at that second reading. But there is two readings required for an ordinance, and in the middle of that is public hearings.
But that's just for tonight, it's just for the?
For ordinances, for all the ordinances, correct.
Okay.
Can I also say something?
Yes, go ahead.
And just for clarification purposes, people do get an opportunity at the discretion of the chair to speak again after issues have been addressed. If everybody would look at item 5-E-F, it says the chair may, if the topic warrants, allow a second period of public comment, no longer than two minutes per person prior to a final council vote. And that's to be able to give some feedback, some more feedback once things are explained a little bit more.
Right. If you really have something you desperately need to say, wave your arms and I'll, you know, be a little forgiving. All right?
Gordon Curtis, Lisbon Falls. The way I read section 30-88, if you prohibit snowmobiles in Beaver Park, what's going to happen to the snowmobile that was just bought for the park ranger to drag the snowmobile, the ski trails out there?
That's her private vehicle that she uses for, oh, it's a vehicle she uses for grooming the trails.
It's a town-owned vehicle.
A town-owned vehicle.
To groom the trails, yes.
And it's a tool that she uses to groom the trails.
But it's a snowmobile and it would be prohibited as I see it on the seat.
It does say, "Except upon written authorization of the town council," so we could authorize her to have that snowmobile.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further from the public? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the next section, Twilight.
Is under consent agenda. Order 2011-133 to approve the minutes of July 5th, 2011.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor? And opposed?
Order passed, seven zero.
Next item?
Under council orders, resolutions, and ordinances, order 2011-134, E.T. Smith Host Company siding bids.
Ryan will address that.
Good evening. As you remember, the public voted to approve a bond for several projects, one of them being the siding and electrical work for the E.T. Smith Host Company. We sent out RFPs to eight local contractors. We received bids from three. We received bids from Fairbanks Construction, Ken Koss Incorporated, and Red's Roofing and Siding. The low bid was Red's Roofing and Siding at $13,878. Next low bidder was Ken Koss at $14,425, and Fairbanks Construction at $14,845. Original budget was $35,000 for this project. It's not too well within budget and recommend awarding the project to Red's Roofing and Siding so we can get that project rolling right away.
Question? The amount that you recommended for Red's Roofing and Siding was $13,878, but if you flip over the proposal, it has an additional $1,500 to strip the existing siding?
That's correct.
So the amount is actually $14,378?
Under the impression, and with discussions with the fire chief, that the fire department will help us strip the building so we don't have to hire that part of it out.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so just for clarification purposes, though, in the event that that doesn't happen, then we should make a motion to approve it for the $14,378 if we have to, if you have to expend that $1,500 for the removal?
Yes, if you have to, if you have to approve the, I mean.
Am I understanding that correctly? It should be a higher amount. So I'll make a motion then that we accept the $14,378 for Red's Roofing and Siding for the E.T. Smith Host Company siding project. $14,378. I have $15,000. Oh, and that's right.
$50,000 would be the higher amount then.
Would be correct. It would be a higher one.
It won't. I mean, usually what we do when we come here is we.
Thank you, Mike.
We pick the low bidder based on the project, and that's the whole point, is that we pick the low bidder based on the apples-to-apples consideration. If you want to add that part of it in, then I'll have to go back and tell you that it's $15,805 for the same amount of work from Fairbanks Construction and $16,475 from Ken Koss to do the same work.
Okay, so none of those included that in there?
Not, no, I'm showing you the numbers. It was apples-to-apples strictly for installation because we're going under the impression that we were going to be stripping it ourselves and even still, Red's was lowest if we have to add the $1,500 back in. I guess I'm not sure purchase policy-wise if you have to approve the exact amount or if you just approve who the vendor is with the understanding.
We have to approve the amount that potentially could spend, be spent. So I would agree with Lori and not to exceed value of the $15,378.
Right.
Okay.
Is that a second?
That'll be a second.
Okay.
Get for the correction.
Any further discussion from council?
Mark?
Yes, go ahead, Fern.
And it was kind of confusing when you were reading it because if you're looking at Fairbanks, and his was an assumption that he was stripping it all off, and he actually had deducted an amount that if it was removed and hauled off. But then I really weren't sure, looking at him, whether he decided to actually have him stripped or not. I mean, so evidently you are going to actually strip it down to the bare board and actually start over again with the wrapping.
Yep.
Anything further from council?
One question. So that'll leave us with about $20,000 for the electrical portion, no?
Correct.
Kind of that portion of the bond. When do we anticipate that coming?
Right away. The whole point was to try to get all the bond items out together. I mean, the biggest items were the bridge and the roof, the MTM Center roof. The MTM Center roof is obviously the next item on the agenda. This was one of the other ones that we just, you know, to make sure that the numbers that we had proposed way back when we started the bond process, that we were going to be able to meet those. Pretty comfortable with that now.
Ed, Roger?
Well, we approved a $5,700 to put a garage on a lot next to the fire station, and that never happened. Now, we're going to also approve another $1,500 here for work that we may not have to do. Now, if these funds do not have to be spent, what happens to these? These are available funds. It could be spent for anything, right?
No, absolutely not. These are bond funds which can only be used for what they were specifically defined for on the ballot that the voters bid for. So if it doesn't have anything to do with the improvement of the facility of the fire station in Lisbon, it cannot be used for anything else.
But it can go towards an improvement to the fire station.
Improvement to the fire station, not a new building.
Existing fire station.
Or anything like that. If there was concrete work that was needed to do on the inside because stuff was collapsing or something like that, you could probably use the money to do stuff like that because you're.
Now, would you have to come back to the council for that or just go ahead?
Any additional work, you'd have to come back to the council.
We would have to approve any bids?
Director Gordon, the money approved for the garage was not a bond issue.
Correct. It was never.
Right.
The potential of there would be money to be found. The potential of there would be money to be found. There was actually no money that we actually pulled up and designated for that particular spot. May I ask?
Yes, go ahead.
The, um.
The garage?
Well, what I understand from our last meeting was while they didn't wanna transport it because they felt they couldn't, once they got to where it was, the contractor offered to build it at the same price.
Correct.
Go ahead, Fern.
What did, um, what are you doing with the shutters? Is that something that was, you just were using the same shutters on top of the new bond?
We hadn't actually talked about shutters. I mean, I intended to just strip it down and side it back up. That was the only contractor that had a represent, that had suggested replacing the shutters.
So are the shutters going back up, or no shutters, or?
Around all the windows.
It kinda, kinda makes it blend into neighborhood, that's all. But I mean, I was just curious, and it was mentioned in one, like, there was a discussion, then not in other areas. So I was just wondering if it was, if it was basically off the topics, or if it was something that was gonna be discussed, and you're trying to put it back to what it was, or not. I mean, I don't know. So I mean, it's a four hundred and fifty dollar item, if you go on new, by the sounds of things, or I didn't know if you could paint and reuse the ones you have. I mean, I'm not really sure. When the contractor gets there, it's gonna be all stripped. I assume, so they're not gonna be there.
When I'm stripping the building, I'll try to do everything I can to make sure that the shutter covers.
Just to curious. I mean, it was just mentioned in one of the bids, so I weren't sure if, and the, it mentioned it's about covering the, the door trim. Is it just a door trim that they're actually covering with, with aluminum? It's not actually the, it almost.
All the exposed wood, and actually, the, we've had a couple of different recommendations, because the other recommendation is not to actually cover the jams themselves for the garage doors, because of the traffic that comes in and out of there, that that one strip is, is better off just to paint. So that's the one, you know, all the, all the exposed trim will be covered in aluminum, probably except for right around the garage doors, so that way if they hit with a hose or shovel or anything, that, you know, you're not replacing metal all the time, you can just.
From experience, aluminum trim around doors of the garage does not work.
Yeah.
It does if you wanna rip it off and replace it, but it doesn't work.
Go ahead, Laurie.
I just, because I made that math error, and it was the fifteen thousand three seventy-eight, if you look back at these, um, bids that are put in, it reads to me, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that Ken Koss put in a bid for a total, for the whole bid of sixteen thousand eight seventy-five, but the cost to strip off the existing siding and dispose of it is two thousand dollars. So if we're doing that ourselves, that would make his bid fourteen thousand eight seventy-five. So there's one that is now less, would be less than the fifteen thousand.
I think you're comparing apples to oranges now, because you're comparing one with the, us doing the work and one without us doing the work.
But if you reduce the amount of money for each one of them, you could end up in a less.
Right, I'm saying you have to, you have to reduce the amount on both of them if you're gonna compare.
Your front cover sheet, Laurie, tells you what is just to re-sign.
Without removing the stuff.
Right.
Okay, 'cause I'm, I'm mixing it up with having to add it into the highest amount, and I just wanna make sure that we're doing the right amount and doing the, proposing the right bid.
Yeah.
Okay. Got it.
Are any of these companies in town, businesses?
They all are.
They all are. Okay, I'm sorry, I thought they were, yes. Okay, I wasn't sure if anywhere out of town or not.
So the motion's still out there.
Yep. Any further discussion? Alright, we'll move to a vote then. All those in favor of accepting the bid from Red's Roofing and Siding with the amended figures by Lori. All those in favor? And opposed?
Order passed, seven zero.
Next item?
Order two thousand eleven one thirty-five, MTM Center Roof replacement bids.
Hi.
Take it away.
Project approved by the bond. We had budgeted a hundred and thirty-five thousand to replace the MTM Center roof. We sent out bids to five contractors, Fairbanks Construction, G and E Roofing, Glidden Roofing, Hannel Brothers, and Industrial Roofing Corporation. We only received three bids, one from G and E Roofing at a hundred and forty-two thousand three hundred, Glidden Roofing at a hundred and twenty-two thousand four fifty-four, and Industrial Roofing Company at a hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred. Again, based on the budget and the low bidder, we recommend moving forward with Glidden Roofing. Indicated they can complete the project prior to this winter, which is one of our major goals. And that, that requirement actually led to at least one bidder not bidding, because they wouldn't, they wouldn't have been able to fit it in this, this season. But that's the, our recommendation.
Mark?
Yes, go ahead, Fern.
And Brian's probably prepped this, because I actually mentioned this, Steve, earlier. I noticed in one of your, in your spec sheet, it actually mentioned the idea that they actually had to provide a warranty, not just on the product.
Yep.
From the manufacturer, but also their workmanship.
Yep.
And I, I didn't see in Glidden's proposal that they did. They basically only backed it up with fifteen year material and labor from the material manufacturer, which isn't.
Yeah, they, she didn't copy the backside of that proposal.
Just here.
It's here. Is it?
Yep. Not showed.
From?
That's the additional sheet there.
That's actually on that one? Okay, it's hard to tell which one it went to at times, so, because it doesn't actually mention any, um.
Well, the guarantee, down on the guarantees, it said Glidden Roofing Corporation guarantees leakage, yada, 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 workmanship for one year, and guarantees to make repairs necessary by workmanship defaults.
So basically, they, they warranty their workmanship for one year?
Yep, leak-proof guarantee for a year, and then the manufacturer's warranty for fifteen years. I assume the first year is concurrent, the one year plus is part of the original fifteen. But all the other contractors basically provided the fifteen year warranty by the manufacturer.
It's just, it's like I was mentioning, Steve, that the hardest thing about their, the manufacturer's warranty is great, but I would guarantee, say, nine out of ten times, it comes back that it was actually properly, not improperly installed, so they actually wash their warranty away. I just have a good experience with this. After about three years on a roof, finding out they're always pointing fingers and have to pay out of pocket to have the whole thing redone again. Just, as far as a one year, really doesn't, that's really not a, a long, long stand behind the product. Enough for a hundred and twenty thousand dollar project, that's all. Two years into it, the whole roof falls off, we're basically stuck paying out of pocket to have it redone. So I mean, it's, I realize one year is one year, but it's just, I don't wanna get in a scenario that we talk about with this roof and with the other school, and we just have a lot of experiences with bad roofs and issues around it that people don't stand behind, that's all.
I would make a motion to accept Glidden Roofing at a hundred and twenty-two thousand four fifty-four.
I would second that.
Any further discussion from council? Just for a comparison, did the other companies offer a longer warranty on the roof?
No, everything was a fifteen year firestorm.
Okay, so no one else is offering a better warranty on their own work, okay. All those in favor? And opposed?
Order passed, seven zero.
Next item?
Order two thousand eleven one thirty-six, the winter sand bids.
We sent out, again, RFPs to, uh, four, six, nine contractors in the area for winter sand. We received bids from Cop Excavating, Premier Development, Shaw Brothers Construction, Doobie Gravel, and Carl Houston Excavating. The low bidder was Cop Excavating at four dollars and ninety-nine cents a cubic yard, followed by, well, Shaw Brothers also bid four dollars and ninety-nine cents per cubic yard. However, Shaw Brothers is nine miles plus away from the shop, and Cop is only two and a half miles away from the shop. So we recommend awarding the sand bid to Cop Excavating for four dollars and ninety-nine cents a cubic yard.
Are they located in town?
They're in Durham. Who used to get sand for.
The only two here, the Premier Development was at Lisbon, and Carl Houston was the Lisbon post.
Mike, go ahead.
Chairman, so that means we're trucking it, not the company?
Correct. That's the way it was bid out. It's the way we've done it every year, as far as I know.
Where's Carl's sand coming from?
Carl?
Yeah.
He makes it himself.
Where's it?
Oh, Pinewood Roads. He was six dollars a yard.
I would make a motion for Cop Excavating at four dollars and ninety-nine cents a cubic yard.
I'll second that. Any further discussion from council?
That, um, all that is coming from that particular pit, not the other pit on the other side?
No, it's coming from the copper pit. It's identified in the bid.
Okay.
That that's where it was coming from.
So it'd make a big difference travel-wise?
Yes. I mean, that, that was one of the stipulations in the bid, is that you indicated how many miles away you were. Premier Development was the next closest, and they were two point eight miles. So I mean, it was.
Alright, anything further? All those in favor? And opposed?
Order passed, seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Order two thousand eleven one thirty-seven, street closure.
This is a request from a Mr. Carter who, um, wants to hold a block party, using your packets. Just needs approval from the council. I guess this has been done before. It's the first time I've seen it.
Make a motion to approve the road closure for the Houston Park Block Party.
I'll second it.
Yes, go ahead, Laurie.
Mr. Carter is here, so I'm not sure if anybody wants to have him speak, or if we.
Certainly, I'll, I'll let you speak. Yes, go ahead.
You don't need to go over there.
I just, just wanted to let people know, we've had it in the past. We've had it like three times in the past. We hadn't had it the last couple of years, when I've talked to the neighborhood, neighbors around the neighborhood, and they were all, all willing and all ready to go back again, so we, we set it up for September tenth, so we just wanted to make sure it's okay, so.
Sounds good. Alright. Any discussion from council on that? Any neighbors want to object, or say they're in favor of it? I just wanna give you a chance.
Another neighbor here.
Any neighbors here? Okay. Alright, well then, do I have a motion on that? Oh, you already made a motion. Okay, second. I'm way behind. Alright, all those in favor? And opposed?
Order passed, seven zero.
Alright, next item?
Order two thousand eleven one thirty-eight, Fire Department Jeep replacement.
Chief Gallopol addresses.
Good evening, Fire Chief Gallopol, Lisbon, Maine. Hopefully, this will be able to answer a few of the questions that we've had already from, from our audience, so. I'll read the letter that, that should be in all of your packets, and this letter is in reference to the replacement of car four. As you know, the department lost the duty officer car four about two years ago, to it not being able to pass the state of Maine inspection requirements. The Jeep was utilized as car four was strictly used for the weekend duty officer transportation. This kept the officers of the department in a marked vehicle when they responded to calls, thus keeping them under the town's insurance when completing their duty officer commitments. What we are proposing is that we purchase a multi-use vehicle like the one attached, so that we may utilize it in more ways. The pickup will be the duty officer vehicle as stated above, along with being a utility piece of apparatus. Currently, the department does not have such a vehicle. Members currently take trash to the dump, pick up hose and equipment at fire scenes and trainings with their own vehicles. The attached vehicle can also be utilized to pull the fire prevention trailer to its multitude of engagements throughout the year. As always, we'd like to see the vehicle be purchased with funds from the approved Fire Department Apparatus Refurbishment and Replacement Program that was approved on September seventh, two thousand four. Currently, that plan has one hundred forty-four thousand three hundred seventy dollars in the account. I'm asking for the approval of twenty-one thousand dollars for the used truck attached. We are advised by two used vehicle dealers in town that finding a truck like this one attached for the price is very hard to come by, and we are also keeping our business local, so.
Any questions from council?
How come we didn't get other bids, instead of just having one bid and one option to look at?
We went to the two primary used car dealers, one in Lisbon Falls, one in Lisbon, and, and looking for a truck. Only one of them was there, so in keeping it local, that's why there was only one bid. With a used vehicle, kinda hard to.
Which other one did you go to?
We went to Crafts.
Well, that's kinda funny, 'cause Friday I went up there and there was one sitting right there, and I talked to David.
Then he's received that within the last, since I wrote this letter.
One half of the price.
That's, okay, so there's another comparable to this one.
It's not a diesel, but you don't need a diesel.
Okay, so there lies itself.
I would actually make a motion that we table this to another meeting, if you wanna come forward with the proposal and have at least three bids. And I recognize you're trying to keep it in town.
Sure.
Um, but I, I have some reservations about only having one bid, buying a vehicle that's five years old with a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for twenty-one thousand dollars. I think we should really look around before we do that, so I'd make a motion that we table it to another meeting.
Alright.
Second that.
Okay. I'd also like to have you look into the suggestion that was brought up earlier about, you know, just paying people for the use of their vehicles, if that would be an option, how much that would cost, and, you know, what the fire department would think of that.
Which is, is not a problem, until insurance comes up and there's an accident that's involved in it.
Yeah.
You would have to actually add everybody's vehicle, all the duty officers, all ten officers, to your insurance program.
Okay, something to think about.
That's why, the question that was brought up earlier, that's, that's the reason that we didn't go into it.
Can we, can we have it the next meeting? Because I wanna, I really wanna understand the liability piece, because, I mean, all of our firefighters use their vehicles, of course, to get to the station.
Exactly.
And I don't know what happens if any of them get in an accident.
Their insurance company covers them. That's happened before.
So why would this be different?
The difference there is our, our policy for duty officers is different in response to when they're not on, as a duty officer. When they're going to the station, they're covered by their insurance policies. When they're the duty officer, they're requested to go to the scene. So it's a different response. They're now becoming an emergency vehicle, responding to a scene, instead of responding to the station. Different parameter there, as far as them looked at. Title twenty-nine looks at any emergency vehicle different than a personal vehicle going to a, to the station.
Mr. Wells, I'll allow you to speak.
Thank you. I just, um, I'd like to say that I have seen that vehicle when it was on the street out of the town of Lisbon. So they use it up for their own public use during weekends?
Which, the Jeep you have?
Yeah.
The Jeep is, as long as the duty officer is within a topsom or lowestend, within a parameter of like a ten-minute response.
Saw it in Runthick around that, so. And I just, I have a hard time finding that you guys could probably rewrite the law that says it, or whatever it has to be that says it to, to get in an accident in your own vehicle going to a public fire, that their insurance will cover. A lot of businesses compensate employees for using their own vehicles during work, in, at work time. My company's the same way. I get three a day for mileage. If I get in a wreck, it's my own fault, so.
Thank you. Go ahead, Roger.
The, one thing that I question is why we need a three-quarter ton pickup? It's not an economical vehicle to be riding around chasing fires with. I would think a half-ton pickup would be a lot more economical.
It would be.
I mean, I. What we were looking there was the fire prevention trailer. Being able to use it to tow the fire prevention trailer? Right now, we have a Ford five fifty towing it.
The same truck with a five-seven Hemi, tow it everywhere. I have no problem.
Yeah, as a half-ton?
As a half-ton.
Okay, so that's something that we'll have to look at when we spec out, or when we're looking for the used vehicle.
Yeah, you know, the five Ford or the newer, well, five-four Ford would do the same thing.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to table this, and I think that's a good idea. Anyone else wanna discuss this before we move to a vote? Alright, all those in favor of tabling this and going back to get some more bids? Do we have a second?
I don't know. Second or.
I thought we had a second, yes. Alright, all those in favor, tabling it? And opposed?
Order passed, seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Tyler?
Order two thousand eleven one thirty-nine, the revaluation bids.
Uh, we sent out, um, requests for proposals on the revale. We sent out seven direct mail to companies within Maine. We advertised it in the Sun Journal. We received a letter from Tyler Technologies, which was one of the companies out of Connecticut. We, we didn't solicit them, but they, they sent a response back that they would not be bidding at this time. The other one was R K R T, which is a company out of Avril, Massachusetts, and Van Tyne, Bill Van Tyne appraisal was the other bid. Mr. Van Tyne is in the audience tonight, if you have questions for him on his.
I do have, go ahead.
Go ahead, Fern.
The, and maybe I'm not too far behind you, Laurie. Looking at this, and I did stop in and asked Steve some questions about this today. I would like to make a motion that we table this, to, we actually have more discussing, more information. I don't think that I have the information out front of me to actually make, make a decision on it. I'd like to see what Jeep, the one room, what they represent overall. I mean, this is a four-year process that's gonna affect the town for ten years. I don't think we need to jump into any obligations that we're not really sure what's gonna happen. I'd be curious to know if, um, with the difference in prices, if the first year is, if we're actually getting, if every house they actually measure and look at, if that information goes in the computer, or if one actually just taking the information, then on fourth year, putting it all in. I'm just wondering if, how this actually goes about, and I would like to be more educated on it, so knowing that after the second year, if we actually take a break for a year, do we lose everything that we already had, or is this information's put in yearly? There's quite a difference in the, in the pricing of them, so I'd like to be able to have a better understanding why there's a price difference. Just something that's gonna affect the town as greatly as a revale. I would wanna make sure that we have all the information and we're very educated on our, our decision. So I mean, as far as we're voting tonight, I, I would have a hard. So, I mean, as far as voting tonight, I would have a hard time voting on one or the other until I knew, maybe even had an opportunity for each of them to come in and speak and do a presentation on what they want to do and how they're going to do it in the four-year process, or what information we're going to get yearly. I don't know, on one of them, there's a, the first three years is a very low number, then the fourth year is kind of stacked all at the fourth year, whether or not they plan on putting all the information in the computer in the fourth year. So if, I mean, I don't know, maybe if I read it, if I had a better understanding on how to read reevaluations, I would know that. But I would hope that we would have the opportunity as a council to actually get well-educated on this before we made any decisions. That's my point.
And the question I had that's along that same line is the first, that the K R T is much less than Mr. Van Tyne's, but it says the assessing agent is four hundred dollars a day. I mean, how do we know how many days that is and what the total cost would be?
I did ask him that question, and they gave me a pretty vague response, one to two days, depending upon the need, you know, so they...
One to two days a year, one to two days a month, then, oh, see, and that could add up.
That could add up over a four-year period.
You could be talking forty thousand dollars for four years, so you'd be adding another hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah, the other thing I would point out too is, first of all, K R T is out of state. I've seen, and I think we've all heard of a number of evaluations that's been done relatively close in proximity to Lisbon by out-of-state companies, and residents have been up in arms when that company left with those evaluations. I also talked to Steve this afternoon, and I understand that this K R T company is a new company as of two thousand and ten. So I don't know how much historical background they have in performing evaluations, which might be representative of why their numbers are kind of skewed. So, I mean, I, the fact that we sent out, I don't know, nine or ten, seven letters or whatever to other places in the state of Maine, and we only got one client back from the state of Maine, and we've got a client from out of state that doesn't seem to have a lot of experience. I mean, you guys can postpone it if you want, but I know what I want to do.
Well, not K R T, and I apologize, I didn't get you all the proposals, so you could look at it. But one of the things that stuck out too is that all of their prior experience, they listed their prior experience, and most all of them were with a company called Vision Appraisal. And that's a whole separate software package that when you, if you hire Vision Appraisal, and they do a great job. They've done quite a few towns in the state of Maine, but no, at no time has this group as itself done a revow since they have been together as one group since two thousand and ten. So it's, Vision Appraisal is a different software than Trio Software. So, and we specifically asked for experience with Trio Software.
It seems kind of funny that at a time when work is not available for a lot of businesses and people are looking for work, we would only get one or two that would even be interested, something sounds screwy here.
I think, Roger, I think the issue here is that because we're doing this four-year plan, and I don't think that's a standard way it's usually done, so that may have scared off some companies from wanting to bid on it even. And most towns tend to save up the money and then pay all at once to get it done in one or two years.
Maybe that's what we should do.
I am.
Very unlikely to have been able to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be...
Going through that for years.
Listening to Mike's discussion in FMA, I mean, it'd be interesting to hear what the rest of the council does have concerns. I mean, a couple of the questions I asked Steve right off the bat, I mean, does this company actually have a background in evaluating hydro dams? Do they actually have a background in doing, you know, other large, you know, pipelines or, you know, CMP buildings? Are a lot of these factors that will play a big role in our revaluation? As far as going back and having a workshop with Mr. Van Tyne, he's already sat through multiple workshops and explained how the process would be to detail what we'd get each year, so. I mean, I don't think I need to sit back, that wasn't implying, I don't think that was my concern of how it would be done. I would just want to make sure that we were comparing apples to apples, and if we're not, then we have to look at this bid a little bit differently, I believe. So, I mean, that was my concern. If Mike put a motion on the table, I would probably look at, try and understand what the rest of the council, how they feel.
Well, I'll put a motion on the table to accept the offer from William Van Tyne at three hundred and eight thousand.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion from council? Yeah, I personally would have liked to hear a little bit more from K R T and, you know, figure out what they are and what's about them before I just shot it down. But, you know, I don't know how the rest of the council feels.
I think we need to compare apples to apples, I think we need to have a, I know we've heard Bill's take on it, but I would really like to see what their plan is, how they do it. I know it's different, but maybe it's the best plan for us.
My only reservation that I was saying about that is the four hundred dollars a day, if it's one to two days a week. Just say fifty weeks a year at roughly eight hundred dollars a week, you could be adding an additional forty thousand every year over a four-year period. So you could be adding another hundred and sixty thousand to this, so you'd be well over four hundred thousand dollars. And part of the proposal that Mr. Van Tyne had presented us with when he gave all the examples about doing the list and measure and entering the stuff and phasing it in, and basically all the information that he's been giving us about the work that he's been doing already, you know, he was trying to attain the goal, which is we need to have the revaluation, and if we keep waiting on this, the costs could end up going up. So, I mean, worst-case scenario, if you add a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to this, you're looking at over four hundred thousand dollars, depending on how long we wait to get both of them in for a presentation, you know, we could be spending more money. That's my thought.
Anything further?
I'm certainly not in favor of it, of doing anything with it tonight.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Of what?
Of accepting the William Van Tyne. Were you accepting the bid or tabling it, Mike?
No, I'm accepting the bid, three hundred and eight thousand. Based on the fact that it's an out-of-state company with no experience, and I think we should keep our business in Maine. And I think because the other companies didn't want to do it, maybe because of the four-year split, but we have something that we need to jump on and we need to move, and I think we've had some excellent experience. I think the citizens of the town recognize Mr. Van Tyne as a good resource to us.
Point of order.
I disagree.
Didn't Fern say he made a motion to table it?
Wasn't seconded.
Laurie said seconded, or she was talking about it. You have to do that motion before you do Mike's.
I didn't hear a second.
I don't think Laurie commented.
Sorry, comments on...
I believe the motion died without a second, that was how I read the situation.
That's fine, I was just saying that Fern said table it.
All right, all those in favor of accepting the bill from Mr. Bill Van Tyne for three hundred and eight thousand? All those in favor?
Yes.
All right, and opposed?
Order two.
Four-three. Four-three.
Which one are you?
I voted against it.
Three, thanks.
Four-three.
Thank you. So, motion passes, four-three.
Next item?
Order two thousand eleven one forty, council working rules amendment.
All right, Laurie, did you have some additional stuff you wanted to do here?
The, oh, the draft that is in our packet was what we had discussed at the workshop that we had last Tuesday night. And I don't know what people feel about that other issue that was pointed out to the council this evening.
Yes, go ahead, Fern.
I would just, unfortunately, that document that we were actually trying to amend actually had a lot of different areas. And what I've learned about any document that we amend, if you change one area, there's a lot of different areas that we need to change. I think the spirit and the thought process that we went through, I think was legitimate, whether or not every T was crossed and every I was dotted. I mean, I think that's, to me, is more of a secretarial issue or something needs to be addressed. But I think even the first night, we actually voted in spirit of what we felt as a council, we wanted to move forward with. And I don't think it was, anybody was totally against that idea. Whether or not, I mean, I would still like to approve the fact of what we were talking about the other night, where we were moving forward with the audience participation where it is, participation where it is, and the idea that if there was a circumstance where Mark or the chair at that particular time wanted more input or felt there's more input to come, had the opportunity to do so. I mean, I think that was very fair, the way that was written. And I'd like to vote on that and make sure that it moves forward in that direction. And I'm not sure how we could need to correct the fine print of where it's listed in different areas or in different sections and make sure that that comes along with it. But I don't think our intentions really changed, and I think it's just a difference in some of the, in some of the wording that needs to be updated to meet our concerns. I'm not sure if, do we need to actually have a motion to accept something with the change? I mean, how would this need to go through?
I believe that's what we would have to do, yes, we need to, do we have a rewritten copy of it here, a rewrite, or?
I mean, this was the piece that was being changed.
Okay, so, okay, okay. I think we can just amend the existing document with the changes listed here.
Laurie, do you have anything to add to that as far as Steve?
I mean, that, I'm okay with that sentence coming out of there, but as you had just given consideration to, I don't know if there's other pieces of it that are affected, because actually part of this that's in this page that we're taking out is actually the modified version that's on the back. You know, it's a summary of it on the back here, so there would need to be some changes to the back there. If people want to leave that open-ended, fine, to make those changes, fine with that.
I believe, I mean, the intent of what we were trying to do is to put the audience participation in front of the meeting, so we have a pretty good feeling of what the concerns are with the citizens. And then having an avenue where during the meeting, the chair could actually open it up for the discussions if warranted.
Which is?
That's, I would make a motion that we actually approve that, barring any changes need to be done to the working rules to actually reflect that. Not quoting a sentence or two sentences, anything into that working rules that need to be corrected to make that work correctly.
Making a motion?
I made a motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion from council?
I just want to make sure I understand, so I know we all agree in what we're trying to do.
Correct.
We're going to rewrite the document, so it's what we're trying to do.
Correct.
And we'll just fix that document and then get it published. So, okay, and we'll get a chance to proofread it before we get it published.
That's my understanding of it, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Am I the only one that feels like we're trying to reinvent the wheel? It's an ongoing process.
I think it's like, just like, you know, the way Ford has to keep redesigning their truck every year, trying to get a little better. It's like what we're doing with the working rules, just kind of...
This is not a new concept, though, guys, this has been out here for about two months, and I'm taking the fall for it entirely. So you can throw me under the bus all you want, but I haven't heard any of you guys make constructive criticism, namely you, Roger, at any of the other workshops or the meetings. So if you've got an issue about it, now's the time to speak, because it will be in final format pretty soon, and I don't want to keep having it thrown up in my face.
I personally had no problem with the working rules of the council we had prior to this whole debacle. I felt it worked well for the people, the people used it. And the reason that we had an issue, and the reason that some of the councils had issues, was because of the way that we was conducting our business. If we were doing what we were supposed to do correctly, the people wouldn't be out there beating on it. But the whole thing is, is that because we choose to do things a little on the gray side, we have to rewrite the rules to make it right with the people. And I believe that the way that it was originally was the way it should have been, and the people can come forth. And if they're disgusted with the way we're doing business, we should be man enough to stand here and take the discussion that they have to give us.
Point so taken, let's move it along.
And I find this whole thing ridiculous.
All right, and I have no problem with taking the slings and arrows of the public if they want to throw it at me, but, you know, I just wanted it in an organized manner, so that we can conduct business after we've got beaten up and tomato's in our face. That's all I care about.
Well, I will make some adjustments and send you all.
You have a motion on the floor, all right. We need a vote on that. All right, all those in favor of changing the rules, and opposed?
Order pass six-one.
Next item?
Order two thousand eleven one forty-one, park ordinance amendment, first reading, roll call vote.
Okay, in front of you, you have the park regulations section of the ordinance. We originally looked at this to just adjust the time from seven to nine P.M. And make sure, and adjust for M T M. But with Chief Brooks, myself, recreation director, and Earl of Brooks, our park ranger, we were looking at this during a meeting, and some things were noticed that were missing. One is Ricker Park, is not in the listing of parks, which it should be. And also, there was some discussion about Summer Street Park, that there's actually people camping there and having fires. They thought maybe that should also come under the park ranger's ability to at least issue a fire permit if needed, so we'd have some control over what's going on there. And then on the back, where it says parking and traffic, Earl pointed out that the park has rules that did not coincide with what the ordinance reads, which is excluding recreational vehicles, ATVs, and snowmobiles being prohibited from Beaver Park. So we stuck that in there as well, so we could talk about it and you could decide what you want to do. So I think that was it for...
Are there any major trails that would be inhibited for snowmobiles or four-wheelers through Beaver Park?
There's, I've cross-country skied there a few times, and it's mostly all just trails that are room for the cross-country skiers. And then off to the side, there's areas for snowshoeing, and that's picking up all the time. So that's what she does, she spends her time getting the trails ready during the winter, so.
So there's no through trails or designated through trails?
No, there are no snowmobile trails through the park.
Chair, may I ask, we have someone that actually can represent that and tell us exactly where the trail system goes through.
Gordon Curtis, if you'd like to speak to that.
Lisbon is my brother's territory, but historically, we had snowmobile trails through there that went all across railroad tracks and by the pit. Those are kind of getting blocked off now. A buck years ago, the planning board, the chairman at that time, Jack Hunt, asked us, asked me at least, we're at the trail boards, so he can put them on the map of the planning board, so that if somebody wanted to come in in a development area, the planning board could say, well, okay, here, but you got this recreational trail here. I'm thinking that there is still a way to get through there. There are some snowmobiles that go through there and on the railroad tracks, and maybe not exactly in Beaver Park. Also tell you that there's a lot of people that do walk the snowmobile in Beaver Park. And that's recreational area, like after recreating there. But basically, there is no trail going through there right now, only because it's been blocked off by either development or the park ranger.
Chair, ma'am?
Yes, go ahead, Fern.
Going through there through the winter, I noticed down the road of Beaver Park, there's actually a trail that actually goes down, pretty much down the road, that main road that kind of cuts around it a little bit. And I'd almost think that that trail somewhere along the line kind of goes over the property to some point. Maybe it's just a corner or not, I don't know, but it looks pretty close, if not. I mean, I don't know where the boundaries stand, I mean, I would...
That might be in the right way or be paralyzed over there also.
Yeah, I mean, if...
There might be some small bit here.
I mean, I would like, if we could actually, if this is going to be wording and not to come back and change it again, if we can actually make parks not sleepovers unless it's approved by the park ranger, why couldn't we actually say no ATVing and snowmobiling unless it's approved by the park or by... I mean, I would just like to put it in that if it isn't approved, if Lisbon or somehow could coordinate, and we've seen that the walking trail, life can live with both people walking and snowshoeing and riding snowmobiles and on one trail. And the trails through Beaver Park are quite wide. So, I mean, I would like to think that there may be an opportunity, and I wouldn't want to just write it off in this amendment. So I would like to put it in there that it would be restricted unless approved by whoever necessary. So, I mean, there is an avenue to be able to do it.
What recourse would the snowmobile club or the snowmobile have if the park ranger said no?
I would think at that point in time, it could be addressed to the council.
Can I ask Mr. Curtis a question? Can I ask Mr. Curtis a question? Mr. Arndt, his spirit lives through the Park Ranger and that whole Beaver Park. At that time, what was the reasoning that he did not want snowmobiles in the park? Do you remember him ever speaking to that?
I don't know that he ever did.
He didn't want them on his own property either.
He didn't want them on his own property, but I don't recall that he didn't want them in Beaver Park.
Okay.
He used to go through there. He'd go through there a lot.
If I could make just a recommendation, maybe, I hate to table this again, but give Verla the opportunity to speak to that. I mean, I think she's the Ranger.
I do believe that it shouldn't be, if we need more time to speak about it, I would like to actually have the snowmobile group meet with, in that meeting. It is town-owned property, and everybody pays their fair share, and I would hate to think that we would actually put in a line that would actually just have a flat line, no, if in the future, if it was to be or if it is happening now, and that would actually change the total avenue or ability to go in and snowmobile even towards edge. I mean, that is a lot of property, and I know there is a lot of cross-country trails I've been to there, but, I mean, I think Lisbon's proved that you can actually have both in one particular area without having a problem.
Yeah, my suggestion would be just, you know, rather than tabling the whole thing, why don't we just delete the recreational motor vehicles prohibition there and pass the rest of it so we can at least get the hours change for MTM Park done because, you know, we're getting late in the summer, and we need to get that done now rather than table it until October when it won't matter. Mr. Wells?
Could you just change it to say on town-approved trails?
So, I think we need to work that out maybe more and, you know, work with the Trails Commission and try to get something that'll be acceptable language to the snowmobile club.
In the future, if there is an approved trail, it would already be approval to do that.
I think that's the kind of language that makes sense, but I think that's the kind of thing we really need to work out in the process. And, you know, I'd rather not see the whole thing get stopped because we do need to change those hours and do that soon. Go ahead.
Steve Warren. Lisbon. I think the Lisbon Trail in Miller Park is, really needs to have some different terminology. It needs to be changed so that, because that is transportation, people need to be able to go through there at whatever hour they choose to. And it is used from very early in the morning until dusk. And so, I think there needs to be a change to the wording that applies to that area and especially as the trail gets extended down into, along the Andruskogin and into Lisbon Falls. It's going to be necessary for that to be available for transportation at whatever hour.
And speaking to that, one of the avenues that was used for the bonding of that or the funding of that was the idea of the safe access to school. So, I'm not sure where that stops on the other end. I mean, that was part of that initial talking point, I think, was a safe access to school for part of that application at one end of it. So, I'm not sure where the trail stops, where the park stops, where it doesn't. I don't know, but... And I know some kids do walk home after dark, I mean, because it gets dark quite early during the winter, but to that point, I mean, maybe it doesn't apply. I don't know, but...
Would I be allowed to speak?
I'll let you speak, Todd, and keep it short, non-topic.
Last year and the year before, great-grandchildren were having baseball games, Little League, no, it wasn't even Little League, T-ball or whatever at Beaver Park. I don't have a snowmobile. I don't have an ATV. My feeling of Beaver Park is peace and quiet, a place where people can cross-country ski, enjoy the sounds and the sights of peace and quiet of winter, ATVs and snowmobiles allowed and go fast. I just can't see them interacting with cross-country skiers, with kids running across the road in the summer, before and after baseball games and sometimes during baseball games. I just, I'm sorry, but I would be opposed. I don't have a vote, but that's my opinion.
Thank you. And that's why I think it's a complex subject that really needs to be taken the time to deal with just that issue because, you know, it's something that we need to clarify where they would be allowed in there. Go ahead, Roger.
The one thing that comes into mind real quick is that there are taxpayers that are paying taxes in this community that have the right to use that park for a four-wheeler as well as that do with snowshoes. And if we tell people that they can't, I think we're sending a pretty wrong message.
I think, the thing I would want to look for, work towards...
Doing it for like fifteen or twenty years.
Yeah, is try to have a separation of it so you can have, certainly a snowmobile there shouldn't be blocked off from areas they need to get to, but, you know, there can be areas where people want to have some peace and quiet also. So, I think that's what we should look for in the future.
Would it be possible, Mark, to make a motion that we approve this with the change for the MTM Park to be open from seven to nine and overnight stays in Beaver Park and Summer Street Park? Could we actually move forward to pass it and have less of it for discussion or...
I think we would need a, if we want to go with what's been recommended here, would be have a motion to add Ricker Park to the list and whether or not we want to approve the section about taking ATV...
The park and traffic section?
Right. Well, that's what we would be approving, so we'd be just removing from the suggested changes, the recreational-type motor vehicles, including ATVs and snowmobiles, are prohibited from Beaver Park. Or, I mean, depending on however you want to structure your motion, if someone wants to pick a motion to add Ricker Park and add MTM Park, open from seven to nine and overnight stays in Beaver Park and Summer Park.
So, we're going to accept section thirty-eighty-one as written and add Ricker Park to that list.
Add Ricker Park.
And then we're going to accept section thirty-eighty-three, the hours of operation to reference MTM Park, will be open from seven A.M. to nine P.M., overnight stays in Beaver Park and Summer Park, Summer Street Park must be in writing. And that's the only changes that we're making tonight that we would be moving ahead with. The change in thirty-eighty-eight would have to come back before us with clarification. So, I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I would second that.
Any further discussion from council on that? Go ahead, Mike.
So, I mean, that just means that we're going to go to a public hearing at our next meeting to accept this, and then we're going to turn around in, I don't know how long, and change this again. Right?
If we were to change it again...
Then we got to go to a second reading.
If we were to change it again. I mean, that would be the question.
I just think we need more feedback from the Trails Commission.
Right now, is there an active, is there an active rule?
Yes.
At Beaver Park about recreational vehicles?
Yes, there is.
There's a policy?
Policy that says no motorized vehicles.
In Beaver Park?
Basically, in Beaver Park.
So, we actually have a right at this point in time to have people not to be able to use them there. It's just not written into this actual ordinance, this ordinance. So, we do have a way of policing it to this point. I would not, I mean, I would not move forward with the idea of writing it into this unless there was more discussion, myself. That's my feeling.
I don't think we should vote on any part of this until it's settled.
But the issue that brought this about originally was that there was some complaints or concerns with people in and around the MTM Park.
Exactly. That's why I want to move forward with that.
A hundred-plus complaint calls to the police department, and there's nothing to enforce it with.
Right, so we need something...
So, we're disabling the police department from being able to enforce or allow the activity in that MTM Park.
The spirit of our change or what we're, in original intent, would be actually done by moving forward with this, excluding the other items. So, I mean, that's why I felt that we ought to move on and get to a public hearing and a second reading.
Yeah, Roger, do you have any objection to the changing the hours at MTM and the...
I personally think that the MTM should be separate from Beaver Park. I don't think they should be even remotely connected. The park, Beaver Park, is a completely separate facility that deals with the public in a completely different way than the MTM does.
Right, but they...
I think we should segregate that and have the hours changed for the MTM and leave the parks separate.
Well, that's how it is here. It specifies MTM Park will be open from seven to nine. We're not changing the other park hours, it's just MTM. And, I mean, this is just a park regulations for the entire town. It's not, they're not run together or anything.
I believe there's a motion, a second could we...
All right, okay. All those in favor?
This will be a roll call vote.
Okay, all right, yes. First reading, yes.
Right, Councilor Bowie?
Yea.
Councilor Bickford?
Yea.
Councilor Cody?
Nay.
Councilor LaRochelle?
Yes.
Councilor Lunt?
Yes.
Councilor Mason?
Yes.
Councilor Pomelo?
Yes.
We have six yays and one nay. Order passed.
All right, and we'll come back to a public hearing on the sixteenth, and if you want to speak on that subject then, you'll be able to give us your feedback. All right, next item, Twyla.
Order 2011-142, the wellhead protection ordinance, first reading, a roll call vote necessary.
This was just recently passed by the planning board, the planning board, the water department, lawyers, AvCog, had a tremendous amount of input. They did a great job. There was a meeting last Thursday on the changes. Everybody agreed to. It's now before you, the planning board chair, John Poppen, is here this evening to answer any questions, you know?
Ex-chair.
Ex-chair.
Oh, ex-chair, I'm sorry. Vice-chair, though.
No. All right, yes, go ahead.
I know myself and Roger and Roger, both have been pretty active in sitting through a lot of these meetings. They, there's been a great feat of people working together. I think everybody in the process, including anybody that sat through the meetings with the water department, the planning board, the council, I mean, it's been well-educated. I think we know well more about the groundwater than we probably need to know at times, but I think it's been well-thought through. I think it's been beat up on every angle multiple times, and I think finally we actually have a compromise that's going to work. And it's not one side wins. I think everybody wins when we compromise and actually put it in. We could beat this up for the next five years, but it's never going to do anybody any good unless it actually becomes active. So, I think we're at a place now where everybody's somewhat happy and we can make it active. And then, as time goes on, if there's need to be a change, I'm sure there'll be a change. But for right now, I think we have a good document to work from.
Thank you, Fern. Anyone else have anything you want to say?
Make a motion to accept it.
Second.
Anything further from council? Anyone from the water department or planning board, or anybody have any objections or anything you want to add? I think we've worked this through, I hope so. Hope everyone's on board with this. Okay. All right, go to the roll call vote.
Councilor Bowie?
Yea.
Councilor Bickford?
Yea.
Councilor Cody?
Yea.
Councilor LaRochelle?
Yes.
Councilor Lunt?
Yes.
Councilor Mason?
Yes.
Councilor Pomelo?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays, order passed.
All right, and we'll also have another public hearing on that for our second reading on the sixteenth, if you have any further issues. Yes, go ahead, Roger.
One thing that I did get, I spoke to the water department, and they gave me a thumbs up.
Nice.
That's a good sign.
Yes, because this was their idea, and we want to make sure that they have something that they're happy with, and they'll protect our water supply. All right, next item?
Under other business nomination papers for elected officials.
You're on, Twyla.
Yes, Mr. Council Chairman, I just wanted to let you know that the following elected official terms expire this December, 2011. For council at large, Roger Cody. For school committee, Prudence Grant. For water commission, Kenneth Wells, who's filling in the rest of James Gurney's junior's term to 2011. And for budget advisory board at large, Jeff Genong. Nomination papers will be available in the clerk's office, August the fifteenth, 2011, at eight-thirty A.M. They have to be filed in the town clerk's office by Monday, September the twenty-sixth, at four-thirty P.M.
All right. So, if you're going to run again, get those papers out. And the next item, Twyla?
Under B, town manager's report.
Department heads have started a strategic planning process. We're going to be doing that on a weekly basis during our department head meetings with additional staff so they can gear up and kind of follow up after you. The Fisher Road Bridge, we have really missed the window of opportunity to open up that bridge environmentally, so the public works department instead is going to wait till next spring and do the whole project paving and bridge. In the meantime, they're going to start preparing ditches and getting ready for all that work, so you'll see them out on that area.
When will you send that out?
When will we? Probably in the spring, I would say, because the funding won't be available until October anyway, so it can wait, I guess.
What do you mean, the funding won't be available?
Well, that's a bond issue. We could borrow, we could use our own funding in place of the bond like we probably will do for some of the smaller projects, but this is a project that actually has to be put on hold.
Instead of a team.
Yeah. Also, we've had a lot of requests for Freedom of Information forms. Twyla and Jody came up, they had a Freedom of Information request form. It's now on the town website if anybody's looking for it, and we're trying to fine-tune how we get information out to people, make it available. And if they have requests, people do, and they wanted to come in person, they had to see the town clerk, and she'll give them the form, and she'll make sure it gets distributed to the proper departments. I've had a request from Great Falls TV. They would like, currently our meetings get broadcast on Thursdays. They have asked if we would be willing to switch those to Friday. It makes available much better coordination for all the timing for everybody that's trying to get on the air. I told them I'd run it by the council to see what your thoughts are. I mean, is it going to be a major inconvenience to the public if it gets broadcast on a Friday versus a Thursday?
Thursday certainly is a better day for TV watching, so, you know, I mean, I think we'd lose some viewers, but I prefer to keep it on Thursday unless they really force us to change it.
They really are trying to push it, but before they make any decisions, I said I'd need to...
Who are they putting in our slot?
Ooh.
Yes, I know.
They have Boozed and Auburn, some of their meetings.
We're staying with Thursday.
Okay, I will make sure that they know that my council does not like it being moved from Thursday.
They want to buy us a bunch of new microphones or something, like it's happy.
I will share that with the people there. Also, during the budget process, when we were talking about wage adjustments, we had taken some of those adjustments and put them into the elected officials workshop category. And I think you said you wanted to come back into a workshop and discuss that before we distribute any of that. I'll set a workshop up for that so we can discuss it, and we'll move on that then. That's all I have.
All right. Next item, Twyla?
Is under appointments, order 2011-143, the ethics panel, one alternate member to reappointment.
Is that Mr. Whitney?
Which one's the alternate member?
Mr. Whitney, the alternate?
Comes with me.
Yes. And then you have one regular member as well.
And that's Mr. Bowie for our reappointment.
It's a null application. Are you hoping for a motion?
No, I'm hoping for a motion.
Motion that we accept Thomas Whitney's application for an alternate member to the ethics panel.
Is he here?
Is he here?
I'll second that.
No, Mike already seconded it.
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion from council? Okay.
Do we have to do them all individually, or can we do them all as one?
You can add the other one to it.
I mean, it's obvious what we have here.
Right.
I mean, I don't have any objections. Can we do all five of them?
Well, the alternate member is a new person. I don't know if he's in the audience or not.
For the Conservation Commission?
So, one of your executive sessions was if you wanted to ask him questions privately, but if he doesn't mind, you have questions for him, he's here. but if he doesn't mind, you have questions for him, he's here.
Chair, could we actually do the two Ethics first and then actually move on to the after?
Okay, well, I would need another amendment, another motion amending the previous motion.
I would amend my motion to actually accept both the alternate and a regular member for the Ethics Panel, which would be Thomas Whitney and David Bowie.
Do I have a second to the amendment?
I'll second it.
All right.
It's actually, I don't think he amended it, I think he adjusted it.
Adjusted, yeah.
Right, all right.
Whatever the proper.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All right, all those in favor? And opposed?
Order passed, seven zero.
Okay, next item?
Order, Mr. Whitney?
No.
Nope, that's the next one.
All set.
So order two thousand eleven, one forty-five, Conservation Commission, one alternate member.
It would be Mr. Peter Lacy, who's here, Mike.
I would make a motion to appoint Mr. Lacy.
I would second that.
Is there anything that you'd like to say?
If you'd like to say anything to us here.
Just looking forward to getting involved.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Yes, we need more people to get on boards. It's very hard to find people sometimes that have the time that can do all these things.
Looks like you come with a lot of knowledge. I think you'll help us out greatly.
Your first commitment is showing up here tonight, which we appreciate very much.
And I don't envy your job, your pay job.
All right, all those in favor? And opposed? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Seven zero.
Thank you very much.
The next item, Twyla?
Order two thousand eleven, one forty-six, Recreation Committee, reappointments for your term.
I'd make a motion to accept Mark Tupper's.
I'll second that.
Any discussion from council?
Mark Tupper's a great job, worked for him a long time.
Very involved, very knowledgeable, so.
Absolutely.
All those in favor? And opposed?
Order passed, seven zero.
And next item?
Two thousand eleven, one forty-seven, Board of Appeals, one regular member, reappointment through your term.
Do I have a motion on that?
May I first?
Yes.
Is there many more openings, is there more open slots in this particular or is this?
This is it for now, I think. Majority is a seat, there's any more openings, I think.
I was just wondering how we were doing, because I know for a while we had a hot time getting members to that.
I think we have most of our committees filled at this point.
But I would second that.
Okay.
And Calvin, Calvin's been a real good member of not just this committee, but also the Conservation Committee. Pretty active.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, and a second.
Sorry, I'm a little under the weather tonight. All right, all those in favor? And opposed?
Order passed, seven zero.
Calvin Beaumere. And that's a reappointment, so he's already been serving on that board. Right. And next item, Twyla?
Council Communications.
Any councilors have anything they would like to say to the board or the public today?
I would.
Okay, go ahead, Fern.
I just want to thank everybody involved with the Wellhead Protection Ordinance, it was a lengthy process, but I think at the end of the day, it, it showed that people can compromise and come to a solution to fix a problem and move forward. And instead of pointing fingers, it's actually easy to sit down and actually come up with a solution and I'm glad to see that move forward and I, and I hope the rest of the process continues as easily as tonight, so we can make that work. And I'd like to see that happen.
Go ahead, Roger.
On the same note with the Wellhead Protection, I want to also thank everybody for being as diligent, as trying to get the best that we could get for the town. And now it's up to us and to enforce it. This is something that is very dear to everybody in town and we've got to protect our water. And now we have a document that will do so and it's up to us as a town and as a governing body to make sure that it does get protected. Thank you.
Anything further?